All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Hello and welcome to the NAR Town Hall meeting. My name is Todd Schwim and I will be the moderator for this webinar. I have a few housekeeping items to take care of prior to getting started. We have 126 registered attendees for this evening, which is a really good showing. So, thank you to everyone for attending. The webinar is open to all NAR members. Junior leader and senior will be attending tonight. And our president, John Hochheimer, will be the host for this evening. Once John has completed his presentation, there will be time for a question and answer session. Questions will be fielded from the Q and A box only, not from the chat. So it's important if you've got comments or questions that they go in the Q and A. Chat is intended for members to visit amongst themselves. We will try to answer technical difficulties in the chat as well. For all of our attendees, tonight's webinar will work best in gallery view. With that, I'll turn it over to John.
Thanks, Todd. And just a real quick check, you can see my slides, Todd?
Yes, looks good.
Okay. So, hi, this is John Hochheimer, President of the National Association of Rocketry. I want to thank all of our members who have chosen to participate and spend some time with us. First order of business, I need a motion from one of the board members to open up the meeting of the association.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks. All right, so the annual meeting of the National Association of Rocketry is open. I'm going to start out with a presentation of the state of the NAR. And then, like Todd said, we'll go into some questions and we'll try to get to as many questions as we can with the time permitting. Then, I have, since we're doing this virtually this year, we will do some awards after the questions and we'll complete the agenda tonight with the results of the election. So with that... If I can make my slides work. All right, so the, just as a reminder, your NAR officers and trustees are myself, President, Carol Marple, Vice President, Mark Wise, Secretary, Kevin Johnson is our treasurer, Ed Lacroix, Randy Bedway, Jim Weperson, Lynn Thomas, and Becky Green are the other trustees. That's interesting. All right, so, and for your, our NAR headquarters and staff, Marie Stumpes, our Headquarters Manager, Todd Schwim, those are publishing, John Bolden, our Webmaster, and Ann Heacock is our accountant. The buildings I put in here, we're growing so fast that we're in the process of deciding whether we're going to build a NAR Headquarters building or just rent some space from one of our partners, but I'm just kidding, but we are still growing fairly substantially. So, the NAR is doing pretty well. As custom, let's take a minute to talk about safety. So, hopefully people continue to realize that the number of safety risks that we have. The worst fear I have is rockets injuring somebody, or worse than just an injury. Fires continue to be a concern, especially now as the fire season continues to become more and more potentially dangerous. So, you know, as we're flying, make sure that our rockets are safe, we're not putting others in harm's way, other people's vehicles, that we're very cognizant of local fire conditions. We have all the appropriate fire suppression equipment. We don't launch during burn bans in local areas, et cetera. Also, of concern are injuries during prepping of rockets. You know, we're with a lot more people doing dual deploy and level two, level three rockets. And we're handling black powder and, you know, some potentially dangerous components. If you handle them safely, everything will be safe, but, you know, we just have to respect them. Property damage is another thing. In fact, I think all of our payments out so far from an insurance claim perspective have been for property damage in some form. And finally, you know, with the pandemic and the fact that we have the, we meet in groups, there could be a potential of somebody being a focal point as a super spreader in this current pandemic. So, all these kinds of things are things that we need to take into consideration in terms of safety. So let's be safe, let's think about what we're doing, and just remember, it's everybody in the organization's responsibility to be safe. It's a change, I never thought I'd have to be talking about a pandemic in a NAR Town Hall meeting, but, you know, as everybody has to be aware of, COVID-19 occurred, you know, about the middle of March, everybody's world became upended. Member safety has been our top priority throughout this. As a board and as your president, we had to make some really tough decisions. And, you know, not everybody was happy that we shut down meetings, shut down organizational, you know, groups of people getting together. We shut down launches for a while until we got everything figured out and we could understand, you know, how to safely deal with things. The, the news we were getting across the country was, you know, lots of states were doing different things. And so, coming up with cohesive guidance for people was difficult at the beginning, but as things matured, I think we've been very effective at allowing people to get out and do more meetings, launches, et cetera, as we take into consideration, you know, what local concerns are. Our launches are different, you know, I'm a member of NOVAR, and our launches now have a lot more safety practices involved and people aren't getting as close together as they were, but still, it's a social gathering and the launches are being more and more People are meeting as clubs again, in lots of different forums, and I find this is pretty interesting. Our national events have been curtailed for this year, but we've got lots of ideas and hopefully next year, our, our national events will take place as planned and we can get together as organization on a national level again. One of the things that really concerned us as a board was, you know, the potential for membership to drop because of this pandemic. So far, and I'm knocking on wood, our membership hasn't gone down significantly. Actually, I can't tell that it's gone down at all. So I think we're holding steady and hopefully that trend will continue. And then lastly, some of our key educational programs, TARC Student Launch Program, RLS, are all suffering and scrambling to try to do as best they can in this changing environment and dealing with educational. There's a lot more virtual things going on. One of the things that I'm very proud of us as an organization is, we are very resourceful and very resilient in doing this. Clubs are all doing, or lots of clubs are doing virtual meetings, they're taking advantage of things like Zoom and other different platforms that are available. I think, again, citing our local club, the, the virtual meetings that we have are actually reaching out to more people and we're coming up with sort of innovative things to talk about that's been different than some of the tried and true in-person meetings that we've had in the past. People are having launches, you know, the one good tell for us at Headquarters with people having launches is the number of high-power certifications came rolling in in June and July. So, people are out there flying. Like many people, there's been a lot of rockets that have been built as people had a lot more free time to attack that rocket pile. And, now, we want to be thankful for the manufacturers who have stayed with us and have kept up with this. So I'm happy to be able to report that the NAR remains strong. As of about 2:00 this afternoon, we had 7,438 members in our organization. We have 216 official sections with two in the wings that are getting ready to become official sections, so we'll jump up to 218 sections. And thanks, go out to Chuck Neff for all he does for section activities. Our high-power certification rate continues to grow and our magazine is the best it has ever been. Thanks, Tom Beach and Todd, for all the awesome work you do on support rocketry. Additionally, our finances have been stable, our costs are increasing, and that's one area that I'll just mention briefly, that as a board, we're beginning to really roll up our sleeves on our financial situation presently and looking into the future to make sure that we can remain financially stable and be robust as an organization. We have, we have continued to maintain the section grants program. We consistently delivered, even though it's been different in the way it's been formed in our partnership with IAA for TARC, with NASA for Student Launch Program. The Museum of Flight is still in business, although they've, like everybody else, have changed how they do business, but the, the project that they're working on with support from the NAR continues to be forefront in, in their operations. And in fact, I'll give a shout out to Pat Fitzpatrick and sort of channel Pat in that, you know, the next big round of curation is about to occur with the Easter collection. And so, we can, we could use some additional funds to continue to support that, that mission that we're working on with the Museum of Flight. And finally, we are committed and remain committed to the mission of the NAR as it's been developed. Okay, I talked a little bit about financials and, interesting enough, these graphs really don't change that much year to year, but I still think it's important that people understand sort of the, at a high level, our financials and for, remind people that annually, we file a form with the Internal Revenue Service, a Form 990, that you can really roll up your sleeves and understand as much as you want about our, our financials through that Form 990. But, on the revenue side of our financials, this is the picture. Memberships drive 75% of our income, followed in second place by donations. The remaining, can't do mental math, what's 11% is sort of a mixture of lots of different smaller pieces. Then when we go to the expense side of things, publications is our biggest expense and color challenge, so I won't be able to tell you the exact order, but our operations at Headquarters, which includes paying Marie, as well as all the other functions that we do at Headquarters to maintain that particular operation, is a significant expense. Grants and awards that we give out, the section grants, the educational grants, scholarships, those kind of things are fairly significant. Our member services are hugely important to our members. Our insurance and all of the things we do to service your memberships, like your member cards, things like that, are all lumped into member services. And then lastly, national events rounds out the expenses. Okay, some quick stats of the association. Our membership, again, 7,438 members. Year over year, we're about 100 ahead of where we were this time last year. The breakdown, junior, 553, leader, 927, about 58, almost 5,900 senior members. Actually, when you add all the life members in, it tops a little bit over 5,900. About 54% of our members are high-power flyers, ranging from junior level one flyers, about 167. You can see the breakdown for level one, level two, level three. It's interesting, we still maintain a really strong relationship with teachers. We have 551 members who are teachers. And again, the sections, we have 216, and roughly 45% of our members, at least in our database, identify with one or more sections. So I think this has been very encouraging, you know, again, as, as we've went through the abrupt changes that we, that have occurred in the US this year. I love this graph and it's kind of hard to make, but I love putting it together and I continue to be amazed that the downward shift in both the median and the mean age of our membership. And, you know, the 15 to 25-year-old age group is, is really pushing our age demographic down. These are mostly high school and university students that either are required to or on their own join the NAR through TARC and the various other educational programs that support rocketry. And, you know, our goal continues to be the, the hope that this group will continue to then become members later in life. And I always joke, when I first joined, for about, I don't know, 15 years, I was always the, the mean age of the NAR and every year, the NAR got older, I got older as well. And haven't been able to reverse that trend yet about me getting older. Just some recent board actions that has occurred with the NAR. We continue to talk about recruitment and retention of our membership and we're continuing to look for ways that we can encourage recruiting new members and retaining, retaining existing members. You know, a big, strong program that we've had, well, not, not as strong as we would like it anyways, a program that we've encouraged has been, you know, allowing sections to recruit young members by giving them certificates to, for free memberships for younger members. We're going to expand that and we're going to give Chuck Neff and the sections the ability to recruit both younger and adult members now. And, you know, anything that people can do to recruit and help us retain members is, is helpful to the organization. Financially, again, we're doing fairly well. We have $190,000 cash in the banks and our various accounts and over $220,000 in assets. We continue to recognize the need for policies and procedures and we're working very closely with our accountant to lay the groundwork to develop these policies and procedures. And as, the ultimate goal in that is to, as quickly as possible, be able to put the NAR's financial system to an audit so that we can, you know, really show how well we're doing and unearth any minor problems that may be occurring in our financial system. But, we don't think there's anything egregious right now and everything looks very, very strong. Our insurance, excuse me. Our insurance policy remains very strong and positive. We, actually, we have the same insurance agent as, as we had in the past, but this year, they actually, we changed the, the owner of the policy and the company that's actually insuring us is different from previous years. We put it out for bid and there were a couple of things that we desired in our insurance policy, as well as the price, and this new company was able to give us the, the kinds of coverage that we were, were asking for. One of the things that I talked about at the Narcon, State of the NAR Talk, was, at the time, the insurance companies were telling us that wildfires, and they defined a wildfire as anything over an acre, would be considered not covered by our insurance. And I'm happy to report that we're able to dodge that bullet and the current insurance company covers that. That's not to say that we need to be lax with our firefighting capabilities and we're not to launch when burn conditions are such that you could create a wildfire, you know, one bad incident's really going to ruin us in terms of our insurance. And we're going to continue to be on the lookout for things like that in an insurance policy as things change. One other note for people, I've had several people ask about this. Our insurance does not cover COVID. So if, in some NAR activity, somebody was to become infected with COVID from another member or a participant at, at a thing, our, our insurance wouldn't cover that, but as best I can tell, there's no insurance that covers that at this point in time. So, we're not alone on that. The, the Board of Trustees election occurred and at the end of all of this, we'll tell you the, the results from the trustees election. I think it went well and, actually, Mark, can you jump in? I hate to put you on the spot, but we, we did fairly well and did better than, or at least equal to last year in terms of the number of people that participated in the election this year?
We did better. We had a total of 370, well, I should say, 370 ballots were submitted, 367 people actually involved and we had a few folks have minor brain chumps and submitted online and mail-in ballots. But still, that's, this is the most voting I've seen as long as I've been secretary. And the trend seems to be going up year over year healthily. Still a small percentage, but improving.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Another thing that was brought up to the board and that we discussed was the desire to evaluate our lifetime membership policy and potentially offer some kind of payment plan with lifetime memberships. The board is still discussing this and we're trying to figure out both the, the business case for it, as well as how we would administer such a program and what the, the pros and cons of doing some kind of payment over time towards a lifetime membership would be. So, stay tuned. Again, it's, it's one of the things that at face value, it sounds like it should be just a simple, yeah, we just collect money over a period of time, but it's a little bit more than that. And so, we're trying to figure out all the ins and outs and, and again, the business case for it. And then finally, if you were a viewer of the, the board meeting on Saturday, we went through an exercise of identifying both the priorities and the perceived costs associated with different member services, as well as business services that the NAR has to do. And the board's going to continue to work on that to develop and explore the services and business offerings that, that we have and need to do to keep the association strong, as, as well as seek some additional input from the, the members themselves. All right. Facebook, Facebook is the bane of my existence these, these days. All right, NAR Facebook has roughly 8,900 members. It's the public face of the NAR and it's intended for a family audience. All right, there's rules in our Facebook page, they're pretty simple, they're posted at the top. I'm not going to read these rules to you, but basically, it's, we're looking for a family-friendly environment to discuss things about rocketry, your projects, launches, competitions, what are you doing volunteering, anything else that you're associated with rocketry. All right, it's not a vendor, pure advertising page. We've curtailed that considerably. We believe that things that are posted have to be safe and follow our safety codes, NFPA, FAA, any other requirements. We're not looking to have arguments and long-protracted drama associated with it. And the bottom line, as far as I'm concerned, if, if you don't want to follow the rules or comply with the requests of our moderators, just please go somewhere else. Right? And that's all I'm going to say about Facebook. All right, our priorities. Our priorities are continue to make flight safety our organization's first priority. We want to support and celebrate all forms of commercial support rocketry. We always want to increase our organization's size. We support and expand outreach and educational efforts in a variety of different forms. We want to offer full transparency in what we do and allow our members the opportunity to participate in our activities and we want to continue to provide national support to our local sections. National events. Let's see, Narcon last March was our last national event. We've, easy things to talk about, national sport launch, we had to delay that for a year. Fortunately, the, the hosts, the St. Louis Valley Rocketeers and the event director, Matt Abbey, have agreed to host it again, or host it and do everything next May, so May 29th to 31st, 2021. We look forward to joining people in Alamos, Colorado, and Narum 62, I guess we should be there now in Geneseo, but alas, there are probably some people hopefully listening in that are in Geneseo participating for us, but everybody else is, is home or not there. So Narum 62 is going to be rolled over July 24th to 31st, 2021, in Geneseo, hosted by Mars and contest director Dan Wolf and the support launch directors, Bill and Mary Beth Kline. One thing I want to note to people on this, and we talked a little bit about it at the board meeting, but I'll just reinforce it. We did very well this year, both in the sport launch and with Narum, in terms of the arrangements that we have to make with hotels. With the sport launch, we didn't have to enter into any contractual agreements and the hotels worked closely with Matt and Ed Lacroix to essentially just roll things over. They were very good about working with us, given the, the situation that we're in. And the same goes for the, the facilities that we have had contracts with in Geneseo. We essentially just rolled everything over into next year. For those of you that may not know, planning for events is something that takes place many months out and we have to guarantee and lock in things like hotels and meeting spaces. And, you know, the hotels and the meeting spaces are in business to sell beds and, and seats for people to, to come and meet. So we have to guarantee them a pretty substantial amount of time out from the particular event that we will in fact hold the event. Our contracts were such that, had they not been gracious and recognized that everybody's in the same boat, we could have been out $25,000 to $30,000 that we would have had to pay to the hotels based on our contracts. But again, we worked with our, our events company, as, as well as the hotels and the local groups, and we've got everything rolled over and we're not incurring any penalty on that. So, organizationally, we've done very, very well in terms of our national events and rolling things into the next year. The last thing I'll talk about is Narcon. We're going to have a virtual Narcon this year. Everything about it, we're, we're still learning and we're still early in the planning stage, so everything about it's probably safe to say is to be determined, but the success of the manufacturers forum, the, the success that we had with the, the board meeting and what I see is the success that we're having with meetings like this tonight, lead me to believe that we can do a lot of things and technology is just phenomenal out there now to do things like a virtual Narcon. And so, our hope is that if nothing else, we can set something up that we can have a virtual meeting and open this up to people nationwide, even internationally, to pull in people for a convention to talk about all things rocketry over the course of several days next winter. So stay tuned, we're, we're very excited about what we think we can do with this and, and we hope you all will be excited as well. Getting down to the end, all right. So our value proposition, $62 a year, lot less for people under the age of 25, our dues, we're, we're still, we think the best value you have. The dues have not gone up in what, since early 2000s? All right, The Hobbies Only Magazine is published very regularly every other month, 56 pages, color, it's beautiful. Again, Tom Beach, you know, just hats off to you, you continue to just do an awesome job with, with the magazine and Todd is our publisher. It's just phenomenal. We give you $5 million insurance. We have high power certification through level three. We have US and international competition programs and a family discount. So what can you do? It's, it remains very simple. Just fly safe, recruit new members, have fun at the hobby, take your turn to volunteer either with your section or nationally. Do community outreach, you know, spread the gospel of rocketry in our hobby and make sure everybody knows and understands that we have things like scholarships and grants. So be safe, have fun and help us pay forward. With that, let me open it up to some questions and Todd, I'm going to need your help.
Right, John, you're not able to see the Q and A?
Oh, I see lots of questions.
Okay, good. Yep.
All right. So we have question from Mr. Kaplow. I'd like to address the issue about eight NAR members that are violating bylaws, Article 3, Section 11 by illegally and properly disciplining members in violation of that rule. All right, next. I would like to address the issue that I have raised before of the bylaws not being followed with regarding of testing and certification within the association. Bob, you're going to have to send me some more information on that. I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about. I would like the association to restore the needs fixing report that Bunny instituted when he was president. I don't know what that was. Discontinued if it needs resumed. All right, we will talk to the board about that and the section activities and see what we can do. All right, let's see. Mr. Harmon, you're not happy with Facebook? I'm not gonna, I've talked all I want about Facebook. Regarding solid, okay, has NAR adopted the recent clarification regarding solid state switches? For inhibiting deployment, Airstar Electronics, has this been added to the safety code or other document that would? Jim, I need to defer to you on that. What's? To my knowledge, we have not adopted that, but Jim, can you help me on that one?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. John ought to have to, I'll check in with John Thompson and Pat Gordselik about what the current status is. We'll get an answer back in the next day or two.
I mean, I think it's safe to say that we haven't adopted anything since, I don't know that the board's pushed it out, but I will get with our high power committee and find that out.
John?
Yep.
I could be wrong, but I believe that Tripoli implemented that policy a few months ago, so it might be a reference to that.
Yep. I know I'm very aware that it's a policy with Tripoli, but to my knowledge, we haven't followed suit. So Gary, we'd like to request a manufacturer be allowed to post at least one promotional message per day. Current is chilling effect on being able to share important timely information within our members. All right. We will talk to the Facebook moderators and get input and let you know. Please release all raw motor certification and retesting data. I have asked previously for purpose of R and DNS and T won't provide it. Testing motors is one reason why the organization exists. I agree. I do appreciate the efforts of everyone, or I do appreciate, thank you. Scott, let me, we record all these questions. So let me talk to the S and T folks about what you're, what you're looking for and what our policy is specifically with the release of the motor testing data. Request that non-vendor, non-commercial members be led, has desire to post links conducive. They have. Again, we'll take that into environment. Mark Johnson, where's my 50-year pin? Mark, your 50-year pin is in the drawer somewhere in my house. I'm getting ready to send a bunch of them out. Oh, Bob, you got a 51-year, then yours will be in that pile as well. All right, Bill Cook. I'm not talking about Facebook. Frank, by the way, idea presentations be available live virtually better connects me with the NAR. Thanks. Frank, yeah, we want to try to use the technology as best we can and we're actually enjoying this and becoming better and better at the technology. So. There's virtual NAR manufacturer was recorded. Carol, that, the virtual NAR, the manufacturer forum is getting posted to our YouTube site?
It was there earlier this afternoon.
Okay.
And there's a link in the Facebook group in a couple of places. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, it is on, it is there. It was there earlier this afternoon.
All right, that's all the questions. Oh, wait a minute, there is one more. I have it written down. So Bob Frante, I'm not sure whether he could join us or not, but Bob asked about, would it be possible that we rename Narum from the current policy of sequentially numbering them? So this is what Narum 62 is what we should be. So instead of referring to it sequentially numbered to name it by the year instead. So Bob will talk to national events in the, at the, on an upcoming board meeting and discuss that and we can let you know. All right, let's see. These questions pop in all over the place, sorry. So there's a question about extending the timeframe for L2 written exams. I did the test a week before the state shut down. They still can't have high-power flights. Can we continue it? I'll defer that to the high-power committee. They've discussed that several times and David, they'll get back to you on that. So let's see, switches I talked about. Will your slides be posted to the NAR website? Yes. As well as the recording of this. I think the intent is we're going to put it up on YouTube as well, Carol? Carol shaking her head, yes, yeah.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
It might be a few days before it's there, just so everyone's aware.
Thanks, Alexandra. Yeah, we agree doing this video. All right, Bob Kay asks about member servicing of life members. I have the same question. It seems we are falling through with respect to things like the member handbook.
John, let me go, John, if you could let me.
Yep.
I've got a comment on that one. The, just for everyone to know, the NAR member guidebooks are sent out every 24 months. So, well, and we changed that, we changed that addition, you know, it gets updates every 24 months before publishing. And then it goes out, but you won't get one of those every year. It's every two years that you get one. And I know that the, the life member ones, because that's a special run. I know that that goes out because I handle that one personally to make sure it goes out.
Okay. Thanks. All right. And again, you could, people can keep writing on Facebook, but there's nothing to discuss here. Our Facebook policies are published on the Facebook page. If you can follow the guidelines that we've created to make it a safe and an environment that people want to come in and participate, we're all for it. If you don't want to follow the policies and procedures that we've set up, you can set up your own Facebook page somewhere else and discuss them where you want. So. And I'm sorry for the people that don't think that that's an acceptable solution, but that's all I'm discussing with it. All right, moving on. And if people have additional questions, you know, feel free to, you can keep typing them and a couple of the board members are looking at it. They can add some comments in writing as well as we do keep all of these and we can answer them offline as well. All right, so I want to do a couple of shout-outs to a bunch of people. Now, I really want to thank our NAR volunteers who work many, many hours to support your organization. So really special shout-outs to following Tom Beach, you know, the magazine is just, I can't say it enough. It's just phenomenal. I'll tell you, Tom, I'll publicly tell you a funny story, but my grandson, who is six years old, is a, a NAR member and he gets his own copy of the magazine and his criticism as he goes through the magazine every two months is he counts the number of pictures of his grandfather in the magazine and if it comes up short, I hear about it. But Tom, I won't force more photos of myself on you, but that's the only criticism I've had of the magazine that I know of. So I think you're doing a great job. Trip Barber, you continue to, you know, go above and beyond for the NAR. Trip helps me considerably with the E-Rocketeer with Trip, with NFPA. TARC would not be what it is without, without Trip. So, you know, Trip, thanks, you know, a million thanks to you. Our NAR Board of Directors, you all, we meet monthly and people do lots of work behind the scenes. You know, it's a labor of love. Brad Klein, our NARTS person does an excellent job in, in keeping stuff that's hard to find available to our NAR members. Vince Hugley went off the board last year and continues to be very active in our education program. George Shile with NarTrek. John Lingdahl, High Power S and T Student, NASA Student Launch Program. And, you know, one thing that people probably don't know that much about with the student launch program. John spends hours and hours going through and participating in all of the safety and readiness reviews for every team on the student launch program. And, you know, again, just a labor of love and love for the hobby and just an appreciation for, for everything rocketry that John spends just so much time doing this. John Langford, supporting internets and international programs for us. Again, just awesome job. Jennifer Ash, our historian. Mark Bundick continues to provide for the NAR through periodicals. I mentioned Chuck Knaff. Again, Chuck is just doing such an awesome job with our section activities and everything that he's doing in the section activities. Jack Kane and the S and T group up in Boston continue to work in testing motors and are continuing to improve our testing capabilities. Ed Chess helps us out with section activities and provides a valuable service in writing checks for our different sections and they have established a very good process for the financial security of doing that kind of transaction for us. Steve, Steve Lubliner, as head of our safety committee, and I get lots of questions and things related to safety. Just pitch them over to Steve and he comes up with an answer right away. John Thompson is relatively new as our high-power committee chair and John's taken on a pretty tough job and we've modernized things like the junior level one certification process. We're getting ready to roll out an update to the level two testing process and John has worked very closely with Chuck and Jim Wilkerson to develop all these. Pat Gorslick has led our L3CC group and continues to do a great job. Dan Wolfe in the contest board, Jim Filler with rules revisions, getting tongue-tied here. And again, all the other volunteers, if I missed you, you know, it's not that I don't value your job. It's just, I didn't know you were there. There's just a lot of, a lot of great volunteers. Want to give a real special thanks to Randy Bedway. This is his last official board action as a trustee. So Randy's been a NAR board trustee for a while now. He preceded that as section activities chair. He came up with and really helped develop the website awards. Randy, this next one, Amanda just told me and she said, you're working towards being a full-fledged auctioneer, but you're still in the junior status. With that, she'll work with you more, a little bit one-on-one to up your game on the, as an auctioneer. And I think Randy, the first time I met you was as the Narum CD way back a long time ago in Michigan.
49, Narum 49.
Yep. So, and we, we appreciate it, Randy. You've done just an awesome job with us. Many, many thanks and we wish you well.
You're welcome.
All right. Couple more quick awards. Junior Science Fair Contest, Sebastian Ochoa, NAR number 108842 from Austin, Texas. Sebastian will get a free one-year extension of his NAR membership and he gets a first-class delivery of Sport Rocketry Magazine. And Tom Beach, if you haven't done enough, you've also been our Junior Science Fair Contest judge for many, many years and we thank you for that, Tom. Website Excellence Awards. The thanks go out to Pam Gilmar for leading this. This, she's stepping down after this year. She led it from 2010 to 2019. And the awards go out to first place is Monroe Astronomical Rocket Society, Mars, Section 136, Bill Kline. Second place, Southwestern, Southwest Michigan Association of Space Modeling Hobbyists, Smash. Pam Gilmore, Webmaster. Third place, Blue Mountain Rocketeers, Tim Quigg, Webmaster. And fourth place, Dallas Area Rocketry Society, DARs. And Jack Spregg is the Webmaster. And they get a pretty cool looking plaque that goes along with this and something they can post on their webpage. So great job. And you know, as I go look around different webpages, we've got a lot of really talented people out there putting together some really cool websites now. Let me see. What else is in here? Virtual Narum. This has been great and I don't know how these guys cooked it up, but you know, I got this email, wouldn't it be nice to do a virtual Narum and from Chris Flanagan? And then all of a sudden it just kind of grew wings and he hooked up, Don Carson got interested. Ed Lacroix has been playing a part in it. They came up with help with the town hall. The manufacturers forum, there's a contest going on that's going to continue to go on for a while. You know, look it up. These guys really got together and, and came up with a really cool way of continuing to do Narum-like things in, in the times that we're facing today. So hats off to you all. Great job. Lack Newsletter Award winner this year is Zog43, Narham's editor, Don Carson. Honorable mention, Total Impulse, JMR C. Section 620 and Hoover's. Section 463 editor is Buzz Now. And again, Tom Beach had, thanks so much for all the time you spend judging the newsletters. And we'll work with last year's winner to get the treasure trove of. And we'll work with last year's winner to get the treasure trove of goodies transported back to Maryland and the Narhams section. Mark, you want to take over and do these?
Alright, thanks. Double checking, you can see and hear me. Seeing's not important, but you can hear me.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Just a little bit of a background, we, we're going to announce the Canon Educational Grants. That's the slide you see. The Extracurricular Activity Grants and the NAR scholarships this year. The Canon Grants, that's a $500 grant to educators who use rocketry in their classroom. So these are going to actual, to school teachers in the, in the K-12 space. And this year's recipients are Ellen Cox of Abraham Lincoln High School in LA. Ginger DeVillers, Plainwell Aviation and STEM Academy in Plainwell, Michigan. Rick Hagan of Redford Lakes Minita School in New Jersey. Robin Jackson of the Challenger Learning Center in Columbia, South Carolina. And Ryan May, Brandon High School, Brandon, Florida. Some of these are repeat recipients, others are new, and I would call your attention to the fact that we authorize up to 10 of them. And, and we're perfectly happy not to leave that money on the table. So the folks listening to the presentation, if you're aware of teachers who are using rocketry in the classrooms who would benefit from a grant, please let them know about it and direct them to the NAR website. We do have a grant and scholarship page with complete application instructions. So that's the Canon Grant. Next slide, please. The Extracurricular Grants have been around not as long as the Canon Grants and these are also $500 grants to organizations that provide experiences outside the regular school day. And this year's recipients are Anne Bazano of the Foothills Cadet Squadron. That's a Civil Air Patrol outfit in Bloomfield, Colorado. Jeffrey Cogan, Heritage High School in Maryville, Tennessee. Andrea Earl of the Fundamental Union Institute School in Santa Ana. Henry LaFever, Big Sky Science Education Enhancement in Billings. And finally, Shen Thompson of the Interlake Rocketry Club in Bellevue, Washington. Just as with the Canon Grants, we authorize up to 10 of these and, and we left money on the table this year. I will caveat that, well, caveat's not a verb, sorry. I will caution, TARC teams are, TARC teams are not eligible, otherwise it's pretty much wide open. So I'd ask for a round of applause, but that doesn't really work in the virtual space. Next slide, please. The big one, the GLEDA-MESTA Scholarship. This is quite special. This is the third year for, for the GLEDA-ESTA Scholarship. It's a $3,000 scholarship reserved for a female high school senior or a college freshman intending to major in a STEM field. And the, the full name of the scholarship is the GLEDA-MESTA Scholarship for the Advancement of Young Women in STEM. And this year's recipient is Ms. Candace Doe, who will be attending Princeton, majoring in mechanical and aerospace engineering. And as always, I want to express my profound gratitude to the ESTA's family, not only for endowing the scholarship, but for supervising the judging. They, the ESTA's family, with help from two non-family judges, select the recipient each year. So congratulations to Candace and my most sincere gratitude to the ESTA's family. Next scholarship, also a dedicated scholarship, is the Leonard Feskins Memorial Scholarship. Len Feskins was a member of the MIT Rocket Society back in the day, an aerospace engineering major. And he passed away a few years back and his sister decided to create and endow a $2,000 scholarship to a student majoring in aeronautical or astronautical engineering. So Ms. Winnie LeBrecque is the leading light behind that. She leads the judging to the regular NAR scholarship panel. And so the top, the top finisher, majoring in aero astro, automatically becomes the Feskins winner. And this year's recipient is Carice Houston. Proud declamer as a member of my section, Narhams. She, she's a rising sophomore at Capital Technology University in Laurel, Maryland, where she's majoring in astronautical engineering. And as a side note, I would, I would let it remind everybody, she was last year's GLEDA-MESTA's recipient. A very substantial young woman and we are proud to be doing what we can to assist her with her education. Okay, next, please. This year, we had, we had, let's see, we had 16 applicants for scholarships. So we have one reserved for the GLEDA Scholarship, one reserved for the Feskins, and 10 $2,000 NAR scholarships, as called for by the terms of our scholarship program. This year's recipients, some of whom are repeat recipients, most of whom are new simply because a lot of our perennial winners finally graduated last year. But you'll see the names, you'll recognize some of them. Sarah Alexander, Jenna Butler, Isabella DiLorenzo, Elizabeth Feinberg, Michaela Akita, Gabriel Mills, Colin Ruprecht, Teresa Tomasino, Jonathan Tran, and Andrew Burkey. And a virtual round of applause for, for these outstanding young people. And then, next, please. This year, as I mentioned earlier, we did leave money on the table for Canon and Educational Grant Scholarships. So the board voted to take some of that money and award $1,000 scholarships to the remaining applicants. We, we felt strongly that this year's group of applicants were all so strong that, that it wouldn't be right to send everybody away empty-handed. Every applicant was worthy of an award. And so the $1,000 scholarships, we don't promise these every year, but when funds are available and applicants are worthy of it, we will do that. Are to Mr. Bryce Camper, who will be attending the US Air Force Academy. Jacob Rains, who will be beginning his senior year at Denison. Owen Reed, attending Embry-Riddle. And Allison Van Milligan, who will be starting her junior year at Liberty this fall. And finally, I won't read the entire list. I do want to express my thanks to all of the Grandin Scholarship Judges. In particular, thank you to Claude Dana. He supervises the judging for the Canon Extracurricular Activity Grants. Betty ESTA's Gear, who, who manages the selection process for the GLEDA Scholarship. And then, as I say, all the folks on the list, some folks, some people participated or supported more than one program. And Joyce Guzik was a judge for all three. As this line says at the bottom, thank you for your dedicated service. It is not unnoticed, it is not unappreciated. Thank you. All I have.
Mark, you're still up.
Alrighty. Do we, do we have the backup slides for that, John?
Yep.
Okay, so, because John asked a little earlier tonight, I did mention, we had 284 online ballots. That was well ahead of last year's total. 86 mailed in, also ahead of last year's total. No in-person balloting for obvious reasons, but last year we only had a couple dozen in-person ballots anyway, because most people who were present at the town hall had already voted online or or by mail. I did have to invalidate a little over a dozen ballots. We had three junior member instructions printed there. We had three junior members cast ballots. Sorry, I had to invalidate those. Per the bylaws, electors have to have been a NAR member for at least one year. We had 12 members who did not meet that criteria. We had five expired members. And I mentioned earlier, three duplicate ballots who had voted online and, and by mail. In each case, the ballots were identical, so it wasn't as though we had to figure out what the voter's actual intent was. But we did go through the member database and validate every last ballot by hand to make sure that, that, that every vote was legitimate. And so that brings us to the results. Numbers will be posted with the minutes and they're going to be Rocketeer. But our top three, our top three candidates this year, John Rockheimer and Kevin Johnson, incumbents, re-elected. And Stephen Lubliner is declared elected to the board. And we thank William Robbie and Art Applewhite for running. It's always good to, to have a choice of candidates. We've had years where we had three people running for three open seats and that's, that's not an optimal situation. So we thank you for your willingness to serve. And.
Alright. Thanks, Mark. I think you're off the hook now. No more surprises for you. So, alright. That's all I have. I do need a motion from somebody on the board to adjourn.
Hey, John, Jim Wilkerson, quickly, I think there was one question that got missed about the extension of the L2 test validity.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. And we talked about this a couple of board meetings ago. The test is a measure and it's a it's, it's a check of technical knowledge, knowledge from study can expire after a year. That's why the limit is there. Financial hardship to retake the test. So at this point, the board is not planning to the validity dates for the level two tests. Depending on how things go, it's, it's not a completely dead issue. People can continue to ask, but at this point, we don't see a real valid reason for extending the validity of the level two tests. That's, that's all I had.
Okay.
John?
Yep.
Real quick, in a lighter moment, Frank D'Angelo is asking, could you, could we please give a word of thanks to our non-Rocketeer spouses that support our hobbies? So, thanks spouses for supporting our hobbies. And you, Linda, are knocking it out of the park for Frank.
Well, actually, I like, I wrote that down, Ed, but thank you. And I actually want to extend it to families and not just the spouses, so.
Of course.
I know my spouse is very tolerant, especially on painting days. Alright. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Alright. That's all I have. Todd, I'm gonna throw it back to you.